Alrighty folks, I'm going to tell the Silver Lake January 11th meeting to order. Happy New Year everyone, hope everyone had wonderful holidays. We are being recorded over from the side this evening, thank you. We're going to begin this evening with public participation. Is there anybody who would like to speak from the public? Okay, seeing none? Okay. I would entertain a vote to go into executive session, folks?
Madam Chair, is it acceptable or warranted to take an item out of order and acknowledge the MASSS award recipient first?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So may I make a motion to take the item out of order, please?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, I am honored to present a certificate of academic excellence to a graduating senior. This award is given to a Silver Lake high school student who has distinguished themselves in pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. Alexander Rizzio has distinguished himself in terms of his three-year cumulative average. He is in the top 5% of the class of 2024. Alexander is currently our National Honor Society president, a member of our cross-country and track teams. He participates in jazz band and robotics club. He has worked with Habitat for Humanity since ninth grade and he cites this as his greatest accomplishment in high school. In April of 2022, he helped renovate a home for a teenager with Stevens-Johnson syndrome. The renovations included a new addition and a ramp for easy ambulance access. Every Saturday, Alexander would work on some aspect of the house for the entire day, from building decks to adding flooring. Through this work, he was able to gain new experiences in construction. Alexander believes the most fulfilling aspect of this experience was seeing how the community came together to help another person in need. This is not the first time Alexander has turned a challenge into an opportunity. During the isolation of COVID, Alexander was able to find new hobbies that he believes he would not have discovered otherwise. For example, his passion for 3D modeling and animation developed during this time. This interest grew so large that he began entering his art into international competitions for other animations made in Blender. This is the program he uses to create animations. Alexander explained that this experience encouraged him to truly pursue his passions, no matter how outrageous or different they may sound. Alex intends to major in electrical engineering and computer science when he attends college. Tonight, I would like to thank Alexander for his dedication to academic excellence and service to others. I wish him continued success and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me shake your hand too. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's quite an achievement and you're exceptionally well-rounded.
Thank you.
I think your interests and experience touch every facet you possibly could at this age. That's fantastic. One's phone, do you have an idea where you're going to go to school?
Not yet, I'm still waiting to hear back from school.
That's an exciting process as well. Wonderful. Thank you so much and congratulations and keep putting all that energy and positivity and intellect in your future studies at school. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Alex.
Thank you.
Thanks for helping out the community.
Jumping back into the agenda, could we have a motion go into executive session?
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 2182, to conduct strategy and preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions for contract negotiation with non-union personnel, the Silver Lake Administrators Association, and executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 2187, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law for the approval of the executive session minutes of October 19th, 2023, and to return to open session.
Second. I'm going to do a roll call. Jason?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Janie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Myself is, yes, we'll head it over to them.
Yes.
Okay. We will be back shortly, folks.
Christine has amazing eyesight. I'm going to ask the teacher to do this landscape. So there's 17 warrants. Can I write on this? And here's your, here's your total in 17 warrants. You have a student activity warrant, your student activity total.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I make a motion to take an item out of order and bring up the SLAA contract discussion and possible vote in open session?
Yes, thank you. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the SLAA contract as presented in the executive session.
Second. Do we want to highlight anything from it in public session or just accept it?
As the chair of the negotiating committee, I'd highlight that it is, the increases are much on par with or on the scope with the teacher increases. Agreement covers additional three years. We cleaned up a number of small contractual points that helped clarify where people would be and their steps and that sort of thing. They converted some small, some longevity bonuses into steps and so forth. And so I'm mutually agreed to and I'm ready to go.
Excellent, thank you. You have a motion and was it seconded? Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? Thank you. And thank you. Okay, next is minutes from December 7th.
May I just ask for a, there was a friendly amendment. My name was just mentioned twice. It was the first vote.
You have an amendment, chair?
No, just a, it's just to delete my name off the second mention. Okay, mention.
Which one, Janie?
I believe it's the second vote.
Second vote, which is to authorize the chair to sign the MOU for the school resource officer? No?
Sorry. Oh, no, no worries.
Oh, I see, the first one. It says abstain and I also had you listed as yes, so take you out.
Thank you.
I'll make that right.
Sorry about that.
I make a motion to accept the Thursday, December 7th minutes with the change as noted.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to abstain.
As am I.
I will, yeah. Okay, moving on. Silver Lake Integrated Preschool.
Yes. So tonight I'd like to introduce you in person. We've spoken about Valerie, who has joined us as a new preschool principal, leaving our team in Kingston for our youngest students. And she has a proposal tonight with regards to me for additional speech and language therapy staff.
Thank you, it's very nice to be here and meet everybody in person. Thanks for having me. Tonight, I was hoping to appeal to you all to hire a part-time temporary speech-language practitioner. We have proud ourselves of the preschool and a place where we are out, we have full caseloads, our two speech-language practitioners have completely full caseloads. And we want to make sure that the children that require services as a lifetime IDP are receiving those services. And we'd like to avoid any interruption of existing services. So which would result ultimately in compensatory services. And we'll have to figure that out as the summer approaches. So to just give you an understanding of what the current situation is, we are averaging about 10 to 15 referrals through classified. So that number just seems to continue to, that's a big number. And so right now, about 10 phone calls to make to screen those children. As we speak, it's an ongoing process and we expect to see increases as the years progress. That is due to, we have a large homeless population that happens to be housed here across the street from the school. And we're also seeing a lot of condos and more housing being built in the area. So we expect to see more students. And we do see that many of our incoming students, out of all the services that we can provide, speech-language tends to be the most prominent disability that we're trying to work with. So like I said, right now, we have about 12 students who we have had to send letters of interruption to parents about. Parents are being very patient and they understand that we've been very transparent with them about what the situation is and they're sort of waiting to hear from me. Hopefully, you know, tomorrow or as soon as possible to tell them that we've got approval to hire somebody temporarily to come in and support us. We're looking for somebody to come in one full day each week to work with those 12 students. We start there. And then that wouldn't, that wouldn't mean that we need to increase our budget by about $8,000 at maximum. That figure comes from a rate of $360 a day for 21 days. So that averages, or actually equals $7,583. And this funding would come through the Office of Special Education. And that is my short and sweet presentation.
Jason?
So at the end of 21 days, what's the solution to the problem?
It's not going to be temporary. It would be a permanent solution.
It would be $8,000 to bring us to the end of June?
To the end of June and then embed it into the budget for next year.
And that would help us fulfill the legally obligated services under the child's IDPs.
Correct. For the past two years, we've been contracting out for this type of service. And we do have somebody who is in district who would like an additional time.
So you've already identified an individual?
We can't because we post.
Understood.
Everybody would have that opportunity. But we do have a person who is part-time who is interested. So it would, our contract rate is much lower. Spend the contract rates for outside vendor to commit by approximately $30.
The $360 a day, is that the proposed contract rate or is that expected to be lower?
Yeah, it would depend on who we've got the job. So if we have an existing personnel to part-time special speech-language people, whatever their rate was, the extra day would be the rate. But that is the average, what we would expect.
So I guess my question is, the $8,000 proposal or the $7581, is that worst-case scenario?
Yeah, I don't think that would be more than that. But if it is, there are funds to cover that as well because we have an unfilled position in Central.
And my last question, could any of these funds be applied for through Circuit Breaker after the fact or is it just because the need is?
To the preschool budget for next year as a permanent solution to the constant need for that additional speech and language service.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to authorize the temporary addition of a speech and language therapy staff member for the remainder of the school year, our pre-K program.
Sarah, second?
I'll second.
I just want to ask one question before I ask for the, I just, the letter of interruption is, is there a period of time that we couldn't even doggy on not giving services?
No, the department looks at it as a reasonable solution. They expect us to come up with a solution. Anytime after 10 days, we have to institute the letter of interruption. That letter of interruption starts the clock for compensatory services. So those students that, those 10, 12 students that have not been receiving services will all have individualized compensatory plans for the makeup of the services and then moving on. But ideally, we want to fix this as soon as possible, which is the reason why we're here.
Right, right, thank you. I just, I actually found hearing letter of interruption a little shocking. So yeah, I just wanted to understand it.
When mandated to do that, it says to like kind of stop that timestamp of when that service was interrupted, compensatory services gave you this.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, one more question.
Oh, sure.
Sarah, do we know where this money is going to come from yet?
Yes, there's an unfilled position in Central, in the special department in Central office.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to principals' reports.
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to welcome Connor Doyle back. So we're going to kick off with our school update. I'm going to yield a little bit of time to him and swap spots with him so he can have a seat. A little cozy to him.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be back with you again and thanking Ms. Gill for the kind introduction. That's always. I hope everyone had a very nice holiday season with friends and family. And I'm very happy to be with you tonight to recap some of the student activities during the month of December as well as look ahead to some upcoming events for the month of January. So as part of the season of giving, students went above and beyond this December to serve their communities. Ms. Gill in an email shared before the holidays with students, families, and community members, a complete list of the acts of service students put forth during the month. But I wanted to share with you tonight some highlights from that list. Our boys and girls varsity basketball teams visited Kingston Elementary to read stories and help teachers. Our key club sponsored a senior Santa gift drive for residents at our local senior residential home, as well as our student council and National Honor Society raised money and collected non-perishable food items for the Plymouth Area Coalition for the Homeless, as well as our culinary students dedicated their time and resources to baking cookies for the Kingston Luminary holiday event. These acts of service are such a small sample of all the effort put in by the students to better their community. But more than anything else, these students' giving spirit demonstrate how service is far more than a graduation item to check off the list for students, but rather something that every Laker is proud to be a part of. And although December was a month of giving, it was not without recognition for several hard-working students. On Friday, December 22nd, Silver Lake was visited by Special Olympics Massachusetts representative Denise Larrabee to honor Silver Lake for becoming a nationally recognized banner high school by the Special Olympics. This honor is not just for our best buddies or unified sports programs. The criteria needed to meet the lofty deserving of this national award requires full school dedication to an inclusive environment. Administrators, teachers, students, and community members all played a significant role in Silver Lake being recognized for this honor. There are so many people to thank, but I think collectively, students just can't wait to see how much more can be done to make their school more an inclusive environment. And now with the calendar turning into January, it means that our winter sports games are finally back on the court, ice, or track. But the return of these sports games comes to eagerly awaited return of our student fan sections. Students and student athletes alike are looking forward to celebrating more athletic and personal achievements this winter season. January also marks for many students a halfway point during the school year. Coinciding with the new year, the end of the first semester presents a clean slate. Over the past two weeks, students have dedicated several hours in preparation for their mid-year exams. These exams and their outcomes invite reflection and evaluation by every student. As we tonight look ahead in the spirit of all the students throughout the district, let's all clean the slate and invite reflection and introspection into everything we do. And with that, I'd like to thank you all for listening and I would be more than happy to answer any questions, comments, or concerns we may have.
No?
Yeah, I'm extremely proud of the acknowledgement that the high school received about being an inclusive environment. And I really appreciate you bringing up how deep that look was, that it's not just for special programs, but it's all day long, you know? And it extends beyond the four walls of this building as well. So thank you for sharing that with us.
Of course, and I did want to take a moment to thank all of you because it's not just a building level as great as our building, our teachers and administrators are, but it is something that requires district support. And so I wanted to take a moment to thank all of you for your continued support at those programs because you all played a role in that award as well.
I don't want to put you on the spot. So if you would consider this potentially as something to take back to your group and have a discussion about, and maybe come back to us. We're about to enter into our budget season and we have to make very important decisions about how to spend the dollars and cents of the three towns and communities. I'd really, really appreciate knowing what you and your fellow students believe are things that we should make sure that we preserve in that budgetary cycle. Because we're removed from it. Even if we have kids in the school, we're not in it day to day. And I really appreciate the perspective of you and your peers if you would take that on.
Yeah, I know plenty of students would be more than happy to provide opinions that I'm sure would be beneficial to all of you in the course of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Connor.
Thank you. Very good report, very, very well delivered.
Yes. First, Michaela, I loved your email. I thought it was amazing. I thought it was well-written, which highlighted many of the things that you just mentioned. But I did just want to point out, since it was the spirit of giving, several of your students participated in the gift wrapping at the mall. And we're going to be looking for you guys next year for the Kingston PTO, but they raised over $10,000 with that fundraiser and the students from your school did amazing. So it was really, it was really special that they were all there. So thank you.
Pretty good kids.
They're great kids.
I kind of like them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right. I do have two donation requests for your consideration tonight. The first is for a 2010 Chrysler Town and Country donated by Jean Marie Stokenger, who resides in Pembroke, to be used in our automotive program. And then we have a growing number of Japanese anime fans here at the high school. And so the Kingston Public Library would like to donate six different Japanese anime books from, with titles like Sailor Moon, Moka Magica, The Ancient Magus' Pride, for our students to have access to here in our school library.
Is there a motion?
Can we make a motion for both of those together? I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation of the vehicle and the anime.
Before we take a vote, as usual, could we thank those?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
With a lot of thank you cards out for sure.
Thank you so much. No further discussion, all those in favor? Right here?
Thank you. And then the last item for the high school agenda are our program of studies, updates, proposals for next school year. It's in the shared drive. We have three new course proposals and then two course name changes. The first course that I'd like to propose would be in our wellness department. It would be Unified Wellness. So it would make mirror our athletic, our unified athletic program that we have and provide an opportunity for students of varying abilities and levels to come together to experience fitness, sports, leadership, and wellness activities. The second course we are proposing, French III Honors. We currently don't run an honors program for French III, so we're trying to align it with our Spanish curriculum so that students have same access regardless of which language track they take. And then the third course, which I'm actually going to allow Ms. Ferrera to speak to a little bit about, is an AP Seminar course, which could run as either a sophomore English class, which would be in between like a pre-AP, so it would be honors level but not necessarily an honors class, or we could run it as a 10th through 12th English elective. So we have a couple of options with this, but actually, we're like a coordinator, we've done a lot of work researching, looking into this course. We've visited some schools. So I'm going to let her speak to pick some highlights.
Sure, I'm happy to answer many questions as well. So we have AP Language and AP Literature in the curriculum for 11th and 12th grade students. And AP Seminar is the baby of the college board. It's their newest course, only 10 years old. And only in the last seven years, they've really kind of figured out what it is and what the direction they want to go in. It used to be a course where you put it in any department, but they've since been building it as an English class, like for the last three-ish years. And they're trying to encourage people to use it as the 10th grade curriculum, but they've sent out like lots of different information showing how schools like all across the country use it. So it seems like there's not necessarily many schools yet who have adopted it, but they're moving in that direction. So if you're unfamiliar with AP Language and AP Lit, how they work is AP Language focuses on nonfiction and AP Literature focuses on fiction, but they're really a similarly based course. The end of your exam is 55 multiple choice questions of passage analysis. And they each have three essays and the essays are structured very similarly, just the content of what students are reading and analyzing is different. AP Seminar is very different from that. So as opposed to every other AP exam where students take the exam in May, two weeks in May, this is scored by the teacher during the school year. So there also is an exam portion, but it's smaller. So there are performance task one and performance task two that I would be scoring. And what the kids have to do is they have to do their own research. So Karen Mathias will be a huge resource in the library for that. They have to do their own research, pose a question based off of the research, find an answer based off of that, and turn it into a presentation. They do that twice. The first time they do it, they do it with a group of three to five students. And the second time that they do it later in the year, they have to do it solo. And part of the score is them, me asking them questions on the spot after they present. So we don't really have anything like it and it's a skill that we felt like needed to kind of be brought more to the forefront. Happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Janie.
Yes.
Sorry to ask because I'm not a huge fan of MCAS, but how would this align with the MCAS testing that they have to take and pass in 10th grade? Is it compatible with the MCAS?
Yeah, so the basis of the course is still analysis, but it's an analysis of a broader range of materials. Like they incorporate psych studies, scientific studies. So it actually kind of works better on MCAS. Sometimes kids will be hit with like scientific research study and they might not have as much experience analyzing that through an English lens. So it actually kind of works better in that sense.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Would this be an additional course or is it replacing something?
It is not replacing anything, it is an additional course.
Okay.
And do we already have the instructors in place for all of these classes?
Yeah, we wouldn't require any additional staff or funding.
Thank you. And right now, are you thinking more 10th grade only or are you thinking more opening it up to everybody?
Yeah, I think our-
It depends on a lot of factors.
Yeah, I mean, there's other conversations which we'll share with you about what does our bell schedule look like, right? What are some other options for students next school year? But ideally, I think initially we're looking for it to be a sophomore class. But like I said, it could be an elective for 10th and 12th graders. So there is some flexibility there. And maybe based on course request in the first year, it could run one way or the other. Thank you, Ms. Ferrera. And then we have two course name proposals in our ELLA department. Shakespeare on the Stage. We would like to propose the new course name, The Shakespeare Screen in Stage, just to better illustrate the scope of the class and the learning activities that take place throughout the semester. And then in our Science Department, we currently run Engineering Design and Development course as part of the Project Lead the Way program. But PLTW actually calls it the capstone class, so we would like to align with their terminology and call it capstone.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Do we have to vote on that?
Motion to approve the changes to the program of studies for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Can I just jump in?
Sure.
Hi, everyone. I, I know Karen uploaded our form of studies, and thanks to all of you, we have a very successful exploratory program in the 7th grade. So what I did on, you know, page 21 and 22 is just firm that up so that families could see that students would receive Spanish and French as exploratory classes, along with many of the other things, world music or band or chorus, things that we offer. I also changed the British spelling of theater, with the R-E-th end, to theater with E-R. Those are very small edits, but I put them in a memo for you. And then I, I did move this document from a Word document to a, an old-school Word document to a Google Doc, so I had to change some of the formatting, and I did that as well, but other than that, there are no changes. Thanks to all of you for your help on this last year.
Motion to approve the minor changes as noted.
Thank you, Mr. Motion. Is there a second? I appreciate you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. All righty, I think we are on to director of finance.
Sorry about that. My eyes just started watering. Crying with happiness. So you have in the school committee folder the financial report dated January 8th, and looking at this financial report, you'll see that there's a deficit in the middle school's substitute line. The budget proposal for FY '25 takes this into consideration. There's a deficit in homeless transportation, and the budget for FY '25 also takes that into consideration. There's a deficit in the high school's psych contract and services line, which would be offset by the salary for an unfilled position at the high school. There's a deficit in special ed transportation, and again, the budget for FY '25 takes this into consideration. In addition to these, there are a few other smaller deficits that are absorbed in the category for, for loans.
So when you, and thank you for the summary. So when you say take into account for the upcoming budget discussion, we feel that these numbers need to be increased because we're going to continue to see this.
Yes.
And based on what I know, some preliminary things with the state budget, I'm anticipating the Canadian Vento homeless transportation will be fully funded again next year. However, even what the state anticipated as fully funded has been exceeded by most districts this year, which is why we still see this deficit, even though it was fully funded by the state last year. Motion to approve the financial report as presented.
Any further discussion on it?
Just one question. At the bottom there, you said it was dated January 8th. Forty-three point nine four percent we're at. Are we going to make it through the end of the school year? Are we projecting that we're going to come out close?
I am projecting that it's, that we're going to make it through the end of the school year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
None.
Opposed? Abstained? Mark, could you vote?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Can I ask a clarifying question? There are also warrants here, and in some school committees, I read the warrants, and in some school committees I don't, and the treasurer reads them here. But the last meeting was at Christine Redmond, and you read them, so I don't know what the jury is for this.
I wasn't at the last meeting because there was a conflict.
You were, Christine Redmond.
And we do that at the end, the treasurer's report?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my goodness.
No problem.
You did wonderful. No problem. The systems are coming in.
Thank you. A couple of updates. The first one is under Curriculum Assessment Instruction, just an update on progress toward one of the goals in our strategy for district improvement. So one of our goals was to launch a district-wide multi-tiered systems of support team, otherwise I would say TSSD. So I just wanted to mention our progress so far. We've had three meetings with high school staff who are on the committee and the middle school staff. We've started creating some action plans to think about having consistent support teams across the district, and only thinking about what our agreed-on interventions are. So I just wanted to thank Principal Gill, Ashley Ferrera, Melissa Fontaine from the high school, as representatives, and Renee Donaghy and Devin Micho from the middle school for their work toward this goal, and they also work with representatives from other schools and the superintendency Union. So just wanted to share an update about all the work that's been done with that, and the time that it has voted that, and I appreciate it.
I have a question about that, Ryan.
Sure.
How does your MTSS teams integrate with what Michaela started last year with some of her data teams? Are they two separate ways of approaching looking at students, or have you kind of blended those together with the implementation of MTSS?
Well, Ashley is also one of our data coaches. She wears a lot of hats here, and still, I can tell. And then Melissa is also on our student support team. So it has worked out nicely that those groups have woven together. We also, there's a group of us at the high school this year that are teaming a course together, Katie Novak's Building Success for students, so, which is all focused on MTSS, and Katie's from Massachusetts, so she's very much a pioneer in the world of MTSS as well. So taking that course together, being a part of it, we're very specific. I do feel like we're at an advantage here at the high school, so it's always been nice to go.
Glad to hear that. Thank you for the call.
Yeah, it's been a really good integration, I think, because having that on a high school support team, it is, it's challenging to find everybody to participate, to really meet the needs of the number of students that we have. So it's a, it's a very good integration with the, you know, the data, the data coaches, Ashley's part of that, and then we're also using that to think about the new data dashboard that we're building, like how do we, how to reflect information that's been used for the high school. So Colin and Ashley, if that's normal, thinking about ways to do that. So good to have everybody's participation. The next item is the, under my section is the vocal survey. So we're making our way through the school committees and the superintendency Union, and if one of, the vocal survey is a survey that is offered at the conclusion of the MCAS sections, so for, it's offered in 4th grade, but for what would be relevant to this committee, it's offered in 8th grade after the science MCAS, and 10th grade after the MCAS. It's roughly a 20-minute survey that asks questions about student's environment, some questions about how they feel supported, like potential bullying, things like that. The state then compiles the data and produces a report, both for the district that's anonymized, but also a state-level report. One of our committees in our superintendency Union has elected to add, so it hasn't been done in the years, in a number of years, I'm not sure what the history is. We have, we do not use it in any of our schools. One of our committees has elected to have it used there, and I wanted to bring the opportunity to the Silver Lake Committee to ask if it would be the will of the committee to also use that in grades 8 and grades 10. I included inside of the folder the FAQ. Tried to give you the summary of the summary, but there's an FAQ in there, as well as all of the questions, and that report that gets produced by the state, and some of the rough numbers of it, more than three-quarters of districts have their students participate. So I just wanted to bring you that information and see if the committee would be interested in using that, or to maintain the current practice, which is not to have students complete the survey.
Questions? Mark?
Your proposal would be they do this right after they take the MCAS?
The way that the state offers it is to have students complete it at the conclusion of their test.
And it's an online test?
Correct. It appears at the end of, after they do their math or science MCAS, and they click through the 20 questions. It's, even if we provide that opportunity to students, it is still optional for students. So if they or their family said, "Don't take it," or "You don't have to do it," they still have the opportunity not to do it.
So my concern was the timing of it, it, reading through the questions. There are some questions that if you don't read them twice, you could answer it backwards real easily, and having, just, the way I take tests, have gone through an entire MCAS, the opportunity for error would seem to be substantial. You'd better take it at a time when they would have actual time to focus on. But if that's what I'm talking about, certainly go rest of the committee's opinion.
Right, and I guess my question kind of piggybacks on his with timing. When the students are taking their MCAS, does it show like, say, 75% done, 80% done? Would this be added as like a portion of the test? Because I know that some kids that, at least those that have anxiety, they don't want to be like rushing through questions, thinking they still have an additional 20 questions that are obviously completely unrelated to the test that they just completed. So I just want to make sure that if it is something that they're taking at the conclusion, that it's not something that's going to be timed with their test, or even, I guess, percentage completed with the test, so that they're not anxious about rushing those final questions, you know?
My understanding is when I've seen this before, it's an entirely separate section, that the students would complete the MCAS, and then it would say, like click here to begin. But I haven't answered the test in the last two years, so there's something different that you've seen. But my understanding is it's an entirely different module.
Okay. Can I actually jump in as someone who is assigned to proctor this test every single year? Couple things. The MCAS is untimed, so kids, I know in our district, we allot three or four hours for it, and most kids finish well in advance of that, and then anybody who needs extra time is given the opportunity. They can take as long as they need. And then when they're done with their test only then is the survey, then it says, "Oh, okay, you're done with section two. Here's the survey." And most of the kids are sitting in the room bored anyway, so they just finish it then. But I'm not making a judgment either way over whether I like the vocal survey, but that's how it's done. No, and I wasn't implying that. I just want to make sure that they're not going to feel any anxiety, because something else still needs to be completed.
Has someone been proctor? Oh, my God, please give them something to do.
I have a couple of questions, Father. Do we already, I believe we do, do we already surveyed our student population for similar types of topics?
Good question. I believe, having read both surveys, I think there's some overlap between them. There are some questions I saw on the vocal one that I don't think are directly covered by the secondary survey from Panorama, but I think there's, I think there's some overlap, in my opinion.
And if we did allow this survey to be taken, do we get back data from the state for just our grade eight and just our grade 10, or is it statewide data?
My understanding from the FAQ is that we are provided with a report for our school that does not identify individual students, but shows some percentages based on their responses. So it is specific to our school, but it's not, groups of 10 or less are sort of like protected to protect the confidentiality of students.
Any other questions on this?
Final question. I guess, will this be sent out to families in advance as our other surveys for opt-out purposes?
If it were the decision of the committee to have students be offered the opportunity to take it, we would follow our policy with related surveys, which would include sharing these resources with families, if that were the decision of the committee.
Thank you.
So just in regards to what you said, right, I think it would be difficult for us to live up to the letter of our policy, the way that the MCAS puts that out there, because it would be present, I believe, on every student's end of, like, let's say, science test in eighth grade. It would be there, and then that child, as a minor, would have to be like, "Oh, right, I'm not supposed to take it," or, "Oh, I am supposed to take it," putting that in the hands of the minor. So I have concerns about how we would enforce our policy in allowing this to be part of our practices. Generally, someone who has no problem with surveys, by the way.
Me neither. I just know that there's quite a few people that ask about the opt-out.
Right.
So the opt-out students, it sounds like it would be, you know, bill and sue. You're done with the MCAS, you can go now, and everybody, yep?
There's no way to lock it down.
There's no, yeah.
No, they keep them all in the room until it's done.
Okay, all right. And I wouldn't want to see that happen either.
No, in both age levels, they would be minors.
Oh, oh, clearly, clearly, yeah, yes.
If the parent had an opportunity to opt out, the student's going to get to the end of the test, and they can either take it or not. So what you're saying is the parent said, "I want my student to opt out," and then he decided to take it. Anyway, it would be considered.
Yes.
It's a de-identified survey.
But we're the custodian of that student while they're here, and if the parent said no, and we have the means to make sure that no is enforced, the way we make sure no is enforced is not to offer to anyone, or we're going to have to revise our policy. I would be very concerned that we'd be in jeopardy of violating our own policy that we have voted, gone through two reads on, and several iterations of, to try and satisfy all the parents of our district, that they're being heard and they're being respected in their individual households.
Or it would put an immense onus on the teacher proctoring, and then if there's a sub that day, I mean, that's, it opens up so many cans of worms. So is there any appetite to make a motion?
I'd make a motion. Professionally, I disagree with what I'm saying, but the duty I have to the parents of the community and the policy we have is to make a motion not to engage in the additional survey at the end of the MCAS for 3rd or 10th graders.
Is there a second to that?
No second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our superintendent at schools.
Thank you. So I have two, two items for our district update. We have the preliminary budget presentation, and just one update on the changes to district and school accountability since November 2024. So I'm going to begin with our preliminary budget presentation, and at certain points, I'm going to ask different members of our team to speak, because our budget is in fact created by our administrative team, both at the building level and at the semi-office level. Each year, we come together to talk about the ways in which we can continue to support student needs, maintain class sizes, consider and respond to the fiscal conditions of the towns, and support the strategy for district improvement. For us this year, it meant presenting you with a level services budget for you to consider. And anything beyond level services, we have presented towards the end of the presentation for your consideration. So our process is typically, we begin in the early fall by asking our principals to work with their staff to identify their needs. to identify their needs. Once those pieces of information are in, Sarah takes that information and also adjusts things, known costs, or creates estimates for things such as utilities to create the budget that you see before you. This year is a very unusual year for our budget presentation. And so we want to take some time to go over the different changes to the budget and why these changes are taking place. So in the past, it's important to note that out-of-district tuitions were charged to the elementary budgets. And in the past, we had what we called Silver Lake Elementary Special Education Programs. And those were located in Kingston Elementary and Kingston Intermediate School. In the past, we needed a number of special education revolving accounts in order to charge the towns, I'm trying to make sure I'm saying this correctly, in order to collect tuitions for students participating in our special education programs. And in the past, and it may continue to be, that's going to be a decision for this committee, the Denet Elementary School cafeteria program has been serviced through the Silver Lake revolving account. So one of the things that we, this committee will need to consider is whether or not to continue with a, what we used to call a satellite, or whether or not the Denet Elementary School will be creating their own revolving account. So those are just things, how things were done in the past. So as you all know, when we discovered that this issue last year, about a year and a half ago, two years ago now, we spoke with DESI, and they explained to us that we could not have Silver Lake Elementary Special Education Programs. We could absorb a whole grade level into Silver Lake, but we can't pick and choose students or programs to join the regional agreement. We had been effectively operating this way for many years. And in fact, financially, we were operating as if we were fully regionalized, which helps us to realize some savings in each of the communities. We're not allowed to do that because we are not a fully regionalized school district. We are a partially regionalized school district. So pre-K, with the approval from the commissioner of our regional agreement, will now officially be part of Silver Lake, and you will see Silver Lake pre-K as part of the expenses in your budget. The Silver Lake positions in the elementary schools. So we have some in Kingston, we still have some in Halifax, and we still have some at Denet Elementary. Those will need to become school and town employees. They can no longer be Silver Lake employees. So those positions will be removed from this budget. The out-of-district special education tuitions, we found out more recently through our discussions with DESI, that our past practice of putting these amounts in the elementary budgets cannot continue. Out-of-district special education tuitions for pre-K and secondary students must be part of the Silver Lake budget. That is part of the assessment. The towns are responsible in that way. But they should not have been taken out and treated separately. They should have always been part of our Silver Lake budget. Out-of-district cost tuitions for Silver Lake secondary students and now for pre-K students must be added to our budget. The extended school year, which used to be part of a revolving account for the middle school, high school, and pre-K, will now be part of your Silver Lake budget. The special education grant that used to provide an offset to staffing, not only in Silver Lake, but in our elementary schools, will now be used to offset out-of-district tuition costs instead of staffing. So you'll still get that grant money, but it will be used to offset a different line item. It's going to be used for out-of-district tuition. Special education revolving accounts will no longer be necessary in the middle school and high school. Now, the pre-K will still exist as a revolving account in order to collect tuitions from peer students. These are the students who are entitled to the program. They pay tuition. Shared cost positions are going to be paid according to the regional agreement percentages. And we had discussed earlier about some of the different ways that certain positions have been allocated. All of our shared cost positions will now be paid according to regional agreement percentages. A plan for circuit breaker, we have not taken a deduction for circuit breaker in Silver Lake because we need to work on the specifics with the Department of Education and make sure everyone is aware of how that mechanism is going to work moving forward. So we haven't taken that offset. So let's talk about special education. Special education, there's going to be a number of new line items, areas of increases. So for pre-K, you'll have tuitions, you'll have transportation. It will have its own programmatic budget, just like we have for the middle school and high school. The out-of-district costs are going to include tuitions for students in seven through 12 as well as transportation for students in out-of-district placements seven through 12. Remember, these are not new expenses. These are expenses that used to exist in different buckets. They used to be charged to the elementary schools. And just a reminder that we are still working on the circuit breaker reimbursement and how that's going to work for Silver Lake.
The extraordinary reimbursement or the traditional reimbursement?
Traditional.
That's my first question.
So increases to the Silver Lake Regional School District budget. Pre-K staffing and related costs, similar to the estimate we provided, is about $2.5 plus, $2,579,610. Pre-K transportation, $573,166. And we are working on, but we talk about transportation in particular. We're going to be working on trying to examine other possibilities for efficiencies in the near future. We recognize that transportation is very costly in the state of Massachusetts. We talked about that in the last meeting, I believe. And I know that Chris is working with 13 to examine every possibility to try to help break some of those costs down. Out-of-district pre-K in grades seven through 12 plus, so our students who are entitled to education beyond 12th grade, their tuition and transportation is $6.7 million. Programs no longer in revolving, those have been added. The revolving staff that had been paid out of revolving accounts are being added to the budget. And the special education grant that funded staff salary lines are added to the budget. Remember that grant money we're using to decrease or defray the cost of out-of-district tuitions. Same amount of money used to defray, different line item. The shared cost overall, we came pretty close to our prediction, if I'm recalling correctly. The shared cost overall was $154,433, and I think we predicted about $132 when we gave a snapshot. This is a 7.15% increase to shared cost overall. The extended year program costs, something that in the past you did not see in your budget because they were paid from a revolving account. You see here the program tuitions for $267,000 and transportation for almost $82,000. The decreases that we know, the one decrease that we know we have taken, and that's the grant funding for out-of-district tuitions, we have taken $377,814. The reason we took this number, recognizing that we might even be able to offset it by more. The reason why we automatically offset it by this amount is because this is how much the grant was paying towards salaries that we put into the budget. We recognize that the figure, the exact figure, may change, and we have to wait and see what our allocation is going to be. But we predict that we will be able to, oops, give you at least that much towards the tuition offset. The 262 grant, we believe we'll be able to use that to offset pre-K. We don't have that amount yet. We estimate it will be about $27,000. Again, we're waiting on DESI to confirm that circuit breaker can be applied to offset the Silver Lake out-of-district tuitions. A very rough estimate, about $1 million.
$1 million in receipts from DESI? Or $1 million that we're applying for, and then we'll get the 70% or 75% after threshold?
I believe it's the receipts. It's receipts. So just remember, the towns will still, although their elementary budgets, in some cases, not all, will appear to decrease, the towns will still be assessed through Silver Lake for pre-K and the secondary, middle school, and high school out-of-district tuitions. It's just being paid through a different mechanism. So it's going to give the appearance that Silver Lake has, that our schools are spending a lot more money, when in fact, the majority of money was being spent just in different financial entities. So the preliminary budget for FY '25, oops, wrong thing, thank you, is a 37.3% increase of $11 million more than last year. Payroll and benefits, because we have added these programs, are now 69.2% of the $40,639,990 budget that is in your packet this evening. In this budget, we have health insurance is estimated at 7.5, and each percent is $29,660. We have taken anticipated reductions. We anticipate three retirements at the high school and two anticipated retirements at the pre-K. We have taken 178 in anticipated reductions. So we're going to talk now about substitutes in areas where we have adjusted lines, substitutes, Sarah looked at the FY '23 actuals. This estimate includes the building may subs at the middle school and high school. And because of the deficit this year at the high school, we are proposing increasing that line by $42,000. I don't know if I said middle school or high school.
You said high school, but it's middle school.
Thank you. And we're going to increase the high school line by $11,000. In this, that's what we have done in this budget. The utilities were updated to reflect a 5% increase. The shared cost contracts have not been finalized. So while those, some of the cost is in this budget, we still have to meet with the Administrative Review Committee and the Joint Committee, and that could lead to some fluctuation in shared costs as well, which is our typical process. Homeless transportation. In FY '23, we spent $150,000. Last year, we budgeted $47.5,000. FY '24, we're at $135,000. So, oh no, I'm sorry. FY '24 was the 47.5 was budgeted. So Sarah is proposing that we budget $135,000 for FY '25. And now we turn it over to Principal Valerie Thompson, who is going to explain increases from last year's pre-K budget. We recognize that everything on this sheet is a notable pre-K increase. But we asked her to take a look at what was spent last year versus what she's asking for this year to maintain level services and share those potential increases with the committee.
Okay. So the good news is, in thinking about instituting a curriculum at the preschool, I was able to find something that is free of cost and open source. It's called Focus. Ryan, do we talk too more about this? So that is a no-cost change that we're looking at. In terms of some necessary equipment, I would love to see two of our classrooms that currently do not have projection to have projectors installed. I got a quote today for $6,600 to make sure those classrooms are quote that projectors. In thinking about a number of classrooms potentially having some students that stay longer than just a morning session, it'd be nice for them to have either mats or plots to take math on, especially for our younger students. And so if we were to get enough for each classroom, we're looking at 15 mats or plots. And the total cost of that would be about $4,000. Some of the teachers need replacement privacy screens. Those are used often to help students with dysregulation and things like that, giving them quiet space and things like that. So we do need some of those. I'm hoping for five, for a total of $1,145. As Jill mentioned, we have two confirmed retirements. So we will be looking in hiring staff to replace those two positions. One is a specialized teacher, and the other is a speech-language practitioner. And I have a lot of hopes and dreams. So we are, so I left some of those hopes and dreams off this for this time around. But we do anticipate still needing one more speech-language practitioner to stay on board part-time, to make sure that we don't run into the same situation this year.
Principal Gill?
Thank you. Some notable increases for us at the high school this year. The cost of teaching supplies and fees associated with transportation and athletics continue to rise for us each year. We'll see a notable increase in our special education department for testing materials that Chris has recommended that we prepare. When I retire, I'm going to buy and build a ice hockey rink and indoor track. Listen, that's where all the money's at. Those costs just keep going up and up every year. So again, those are just standard industry costs. Unfortunately, we're not adding anything. We're just trying to keep up with the costs that we're being charged by some of these venues and these companies that we purchase our items from. In terms of equipment, we do need to purchase new equipment to the school. There's a notable increase of just over $21,000. Art hanging system, poster-sized color printer, tabletop pottery wheel, and some modern band equipment. This is for our music and arts departments. And then in our science department, we're looking to acquire a maker's space work table for our Project Need the Way program. Some additional library furniture in the beneath of our students. This space that we're in right now continues to evolve for our students. And then two iPads to support students who, their iPads require some additional support with programs and apps. As Jill mentioned, we have three confirmed retirements. We do have significant decrease in our textbook and equipment replacement line. I know it's not much, but a little bit. They're almost $40,000. We do have a couple of things that we need to replace, but in the grand scheme, it's just a few minor things. And then I am seeking, beyond level service, I am seeking to add a full-time EL teacher, English language teacher. Currently, Becky and I share one staff member between two buildings. But as you know, the population of our EL students has increased significantly. and we need to better support those students with a full-time teacher in each building. So that would allow each of us to have one full-time teacher. And just to reiterate our requests and how they align with our SDI, obviously, our focus is always to improve our structures and processes. At the end of the day, we're here for our kids. We're here for these students. We want to continue to create and implement and align curriculum in what our teachers and all departments have been working on for the last couple of years. We continue to work with that. And so the supplies, the cost of transportation, testing materials, as well as the addition of the staff would all work towards helping us move forward.
And just to reiterate on this slide, the ELL teacher is not currently in the budget.
So this is just a little bit of a deeper dive on the data around the request for the ESL teacher. So currently, for Silver Lake seven through twelve, we have fifty students as of this month who qualify for English learner services. We have one, a one-point-oh teacher that divides her time. Half of the day is the middle school and half the day is the high school. So she spends the morning at the high school and rushes over to the middle school. And there are specific recommendations that come from DESI on supporting English learners. If you can go to the next slide, Jill. While there are recommendations, there's a very formal process for identifying our English learners. So this is just a review of that process that whenever we have a new student register, the family completes a home language survey to see if they need to be, receive English learner services. And then every, since it's right now, every January and February, our students that are identified as English learners, they take an access test to assess their proficiency level. It also sets improvement goals for the students as well. Based on how students do on that, some would, it would be recommended that they would have two periods of ESL a day. Others who are farther along in their proficiency would have, would have one. You can test out of being an English learner, but we still monitor their progress for four more years. So this final slide just has the, how that breaks down. So if you're, if you're weed a level, and that's your access score, if you're weed a level one or two, you would receive two periods of, minimally, it says two to three period a day. If you're a higher level student, you receive one period. So at the bottom there is the analysis for Silver Lake. So currently, based on our staffing, we are two periods per day short of recommendations for ESL instruction to twenty-seven students. And at the middle school, we're three periods per day short of recommendation. ESL instruction to eleven students. And that just demonstrates, we think that we would, we could be much closer to the minimum recommended with a one-point-oh ESL teacher at the middle school and a one-point-oh at the high school. So that's a little bit more of a Michaela's request. For the one-point-oh, even though it's one more, it would establish one point-oh at the middle school and one point-oh at the high school, if it were to be in the budget.
Just to ask the question out loud, have we evaluated our eligibility for state or federal grants like Title III with the increase we've seen in ELL learners over the past few years? Or are we in the unfortunate situation where we have enough that it's becoming difficult for us to handle locally, but not enough to get that support from the state or defense?
That's a really good summary of what is happening. We have, at Silver Lake, we have not technically met the threshold to qualify for Title III, which is the federal entitlement grant to help meet the needs of English learners. However, in one of our other districts, we did cross the threshold this year. So in Kingston, we are receiving Title III services. So we'll continue to look at that eligibility, and it would be a helpful resource if we were. But even the amount that we've achieved in another district, I'm not sure is to the level that a NM three FTE would require.
Thank you.
Middle school. Oh, I'm sorry, Matt.
So you said with the additional one-point-oh, you would meet or you would approach meeting with recommendations?
We think we would be much closer. The reason I can't give a strict answer is that some of that depends on how the students do on the access test that they're taking right now. So many of our students, were to achieve, some of them were to achieve the certain level on the test, they would move from being two a day to one a day. I think we can anticipate that we'll continue to have a population of students that would qualify, but based on the analysis that Lana Tereshko, our ESL teacher has done, we think we would be able, much closer, be able to meet the minimum recommended.
So we're looking at a growing population of this situation. So anticipate that this is going to get us closer, but we're not getting to the point where we're done. But we may use the threshold, Jason mentioned, and get some help. I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think we're also trying to explore ways to have additional staff be certified. There's a grant that will help staff to be paid for the cost of taking the licensure test in ESL. So perhaps there's another way for us to help meet our obligation, but we're trying to think about how to do that.
It sounds like a good alternative. Thank you.
This might be a redundant question to the way I phrased it at the elementary level, but one of my concerns back a couple of years ago when we were looking at the needs of the increasing ELL population is that if children are not properly serviced, then eventually, they're going to lose sight of the curriculum, and then they're going to slip into perhaps requiring special education services. Possibly it's not to a fault of a disability, but because they can't access the curriculum because of the language barrier. And I guess my question at the secondary level is, are we sure that all of these students that are being, I guess, serviced through ESL instruction, are they all where they should be with the curriculum? Do we know that they've had a primary education to that point that they should be with their peers in terms of the curriculum? That we know that this is strictly a language, I guess, situation? Or are we also playing catch-up, if you would, to some services that they may not have had access to due to a language barrier or due to circumstances in which they've come to Kingston?
So the one thing that we've been doing is we are hiring outside bilingual evaluators. Could really tease that out. The only way to really tease that out is if it's a learning gap, a language barrier, or a ELL student with a learning disability and a language barrier. And it's a very long comprehensive process. So the more data you collect, the better off you're going to be. When we have a bilingual evaluator, it's really the best-case scenario because then you know that the data that we're getting back is quite credible. Unfortunately, some of the students that we have, especially at the upper level, have, they're not in category Spanish. Might be a Thai evaluator that we need, which are really difficult to find. So we have to default to what many districts do and train our interpreters to be able to work with an English-speaking evaluator. It's not the best-case scenario, but I think that with the monitoring and the data that we collect, we should be able to distinguish what's a language barrier and what is a disability, an ELL student with a disability.
Thank you for that explanation. I guess to piggyback on that, where do the costs for those evaluations and testing come from? Is it a special education bucket, or is it a...
Every child that is recommended for evaluation in special education comes under the purview of special education, whether or not they're an ELL student or not. With the interpretations as well to the parents' guidance.
Thank you.
And we also, for students, and for students that have, there's another designation that we're, I think we're just, I always want to thank like Lana and our support teams and everybody who's kind of keeping abreast of all the changes that are happening to meet the needs of the students. But there's a new designation too, like students for ones who have an interruption in their formal education. And there's some recommendations on how to provide students with those supports if they're needed. So that also is part of their profile. So we learned about those, you know, ways to support students. We're still, I don't know, kind of getting better at it. But I think we're, through the processes that Chris has talked about and other supports that DESI is providing, they're also providing to our district, to Silver Lake and Kingston, free translation services for students that may need to use the emergency assistance shelter. So I think they're trying, DESI, to support districts like ours that are pivoting a little bit.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to clarify, I asked Ryan about the Title III grant, specifically to allow him to acknowledge that he has looked into it. We have accessed it in one of our schools. And he was more kind than the number really is. It was eleven thousand three hundred twenty-six dollars. So again, if we do qualify, the number is not going to be substantial, and it's still going to be something that we're going to have to absorb in our end of the budget by a vote of this committee.
Middle school, which like Principal Gill said, starting at the bottom, other increases in teaching supplies specifically for our ELL students are a notable increase. Also at the top, equipment-related increases. Our signage is original from when the building was built. Some of that we've replaced, but I want to put in a reoccurring replacement so we can get all of those up to date. They're kind of peeling off, and you can't see the numbers. And now there's updated Braille, right? Braille and other icons on those signs. Conference furniture upgrades. Again, that's a notable increase that we can always do without, but it's something that I want to keep up with. We have some conference chairs that are breaking into people when they sit down. So I want to make sure we're all safe. And of course, grounds maintenance and contracted services has also gone up. The keyboard that we use in Chorus every single day is starting to lose some sound in certain spaces. And that is a teaching tool, right, that we use in that area. So that's also on there. At this time, I have no confirmed retirements. I do have a few decreases around library equipment, AP equipment, and some conference funding that we haven't used for the past three years. And the only thing that I added on here, which we've talked about before for my beyond level service, is an adjustment counselor for that, those programs where we have severe students, severe special ed students, or we have students that have social-emotional needs that, as I've told you, don't just occur during half of the day. So we would really like to have a full-time adjustment counselor for those programs in our building, three of which are housed in the middle school. And they service the kids that come from all of the elementary schools. So on the next slide, you can see that this is how, you know, this connects with the SDI. And specifically, it really supports our most striving students and our students that need the most support in real time.
So to give you a summary of what's not included in the budget in the packet, the things that were beyond level services. The schools have requested a one-point-oh FTE ESL teacher at approximately sixty-five thousand. A part-time point-five FTE adjustment counselor, thirty-three thousand at the middle school. The pre-K would like to continue the point-two FTE speech-language pathologist for about thirteen thousand, for a total of one hundred and eleven thousand for the schools. In terms of finance, operations, and support, in all fairness to Sarah, she has been here for a few weeks. And many of us have been here for a number of years. And Christine, Sarah, the administrative team, and even this committee have recognized that we are under-resourced for a district of this size with four separate distinct districts and four separate distinct budgets. For example, our treasurer is only six hours a month. Even a school not as complicated as ours have treasurers that are far more than six hours a month. Accounting, given the fact that there are four separate budgets, that there are, for every grant we get, if they're entitlement grants, we get them from four different entities. Accounting, the private transportation, grants, all of these things have become more complicated, especially within the last five to ten years. So we have an estimate of two hundred and fifty thousand to address these issues, recognizing that it would require some additional work to tease out specifically how that money would be allocated or what would be prioritized. But we wanted to give you an overall picture of the needs. As you know, we've been talking about this and struggling with it to define the different areas that really need attention. So special education and shared costs, some things to consider. The new IEP process, which is going to be mandated for 2024. We, you also recognize for the past two years, we've had a difficult time finding full-time school psychologists. In fact, the high school has been without one for two years, a full-time school psychologist. So one of our proposals for special education is, we are also right now without an assistant director of special education. We're looking for a ten-thousand-dollar increase to the salary line so that we can, we hope to find someone in this market. And we would like to propose a hundred and five thousand for an IEP meeting supervisor. This would help in district-wide because the, what we would hope to do is that the psychologists, which we are having a difficult time finding enough of, would now take on academic testing, which would mean teachers would have more time facing students instructionally, but also to address the new IEP requirements. And the IEP meeting supervisor could take on, I believe you said initials, the initial evaluations, which would also help the school psychologists, which we don't have enough of.
So Dr. Van Reese, this would not just be a team chair. They would have that role, but they would also be able to do some of the actual testing in the initials as well?
They do not. Our school psychologists, because right now, school psychologists...
This would free up the school.
Free them up. They would do the academic. If we would have a consistent person to identify the eligibility process for each student, there are some inconsistencies in some technicalities that we need. And we need to have one person be supervising for the initials and making sure that the process is authentic.
So this would be analogous to some, what some districts call a team chair, the district team chair. Okay. Thank you.
So those are all additional items for the committee to consider. We are going to review our capital plan priorities with the committee in the future. We are going to engage the community stakeholders through meetings with finance committees as we typically do. And we also are looking for you with direction. We've told you what we've put together here, but we recognize that this is your budget. And we're looking for direction or next steps. And again, it doesn't have to be at this meeting, but we wanted to give you this overview so that you could begin thinking about how you want us to proceed. In our next meeting, we'll probably have to make some decisions so that by March, we're ready for a vote.
Gordon, it's Hannah first.
So I have a hard time advising exactly on what... So I have a hard time advising exactly on what I would like to see because I don't think this is exactly showing us apples to apples of this year versus last year. And that's thrown off by the change in the school structure. But at a high level, I think you've got to be able to explain this both to us and to the towns. And I think you can think about it. I drew three really silly little bubbles. You've got a budget from the previous year for Silver Lake services that cost $29 million, okay? Then you've got a budget of which I don't know the size of that came from the towns to pay for services that were not part of Silver Lake. What we're saying is that bucket now costs the district $11 million. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, so the combined total is now $41 million, all right? So what I think you've really got to be able to say to the towns is what is now $11 million used to be X. And the way that that X is broken up among the three towns is in this fashion. And so when we send our assessment, you should expect Halifax that, you know, you're going to have X amount go out of this small bubble and now have to contribute Y amount over to the big bubble. And combined together, when you got that all figured out, it's 4% or 3% or 2% or something to that effect as far as like the total that we're paying for these combined services, we're asking to have increased by X percentage. And I know that that's not going to fall. Like, we're not taking $11 million or whatever this was previously with the towns and dividing it by three. And I know because of how they're assessing the towns, the student assessment, it is changing for the towns. So some towns are perhaps going like, I think Halifax is actually going to, you know, have less money taken out, whereas Kingston's going to have more money taken out. But I think you have to be able to answer that. If you just go in and say 37% increase, but just keep in mind that you used to pay for this stuff from these things and you don't know what that number is, that's all they're going to lock on is 37%.
I'm going to piggyback off of that for a moment. And this is a very different year. It's a very different budget. There's been so much change. And we knew this was coming at us. And I will confess to you, we've been knee-deep in it. We've understood it and we've been aware of it for months and months and months. Sitting here as one individual, I feel a little overwhelmed. And this is no fault of anybody here. I'm just, I'm piggybacking off of what you said. We're not looking at an apple to an orange. So I'm having a hard time thinking about what is reasonable for budget increases when everything is sort of all combined now, which it has to be. But as you indicated, we might need more mapping. And I think tonight was a very good start and things were highlighted. And you spelled out what happened to change this budget very, very clearly from a theoretical standpoint. I think to help me as one committee member to get more comfortable with the decisions we have to make is to understand the number mapping more so I can get to the 40 or 41 million. And I think we need to sort of see what piece of that is legacy Silver Lake. If we hadn't made the changes to the preschool being absorbed into Silver Lake, what would Silver Lake's budget be in this preliminary document? What is the percentage, et cetera? And then layer on that the change to the preschool, if I'm expressing myself.
Yes, to back that up, again, if you think of the three bubbles, the $29 million from this year, those services, how much are we proposing to increase that? By what percentage, okay? This unknown percentage over here from the towns, how much are we proposing to increase that? And then what does that mean in a cumulative?
Gordon, some of those numbers are right on the back here with the increases that you just mentioned. Can I ask a question and be back on that too? I think my concern with the way that this is going to overall be presented is once we see, at least for Kingston, the elementary budget next week, we're not looking at like huge decreases. We're looking at still increases to the budget. And I think that those are the numbers we need to bring back to DESI to say, look, this is the impact of these changes that you're requiring and ask if there's any kind of extraordinary relief that they can assist us with because there's going to be a gap with where the money's going for the next, at least the next year, where the state aid goes. And so I know that the elementary budget, at least for Kingston, it's also going to be increased. And looking at a 37.9% increase, I mean, last year, we were able to get a 10.3% budget for Kingston through town meeting, knowing that we had some significant changes on the, still coming up. And I don't know how anybody can look at numbers like that and not have many, many questions. So to Gordon's point, unless this is more easily, I guess, broken down for the towns to digest it, I don't see how we can even get a level service budget passed for this year. So, which is nerve-wracking.
And I think not just the towns. We have to be very comfortable understanding it in seeing how one year moved into the next. Mark?
Well, I totally agree with what Gordon said in his presentation. But there's two major changes. You expanded the preschool, but you've also restructured how you're doing your special education. I mean, historically, we have had towns assessed by student for special education within our regional umbrella. And now we're going to combine all those special education kids that are now under the region so that we're paying a share of that based on shared costs. But that's a whole different way to calculate that. So when the towns were individually paying for special ed for a Kingston student that was in our umbrella, now that's being paid by a little bit of, you know, each of the three towns. So you've got to explain to these towns also that this is a change mandated by the state, that we can't keep doing it the way we're doing it. So you do have some time. But the last thing I'd like to say is this isn't necessarily a good year politically for us to try to take this change on and then also turn around and ask for additional programs. Now, everybody that presented an increase today had a very warranted, and I support everything that needs to be done. It's just the timing of whether or not, that's something at this point. But we can't stop the need for English language. We can't stop the changes that are coming within our education system. And we have to address these to the towns and let them decide whether these are the priorities of a good education system, which is an effect on the entire community, not on the entire budget within our community. Because if people don't want to live in the three towns that make up Silver Lake and don't want to come here, they're not going to be paying that tax revenue that generates in case of this budget. So I think there's a whole concept here of salesmanship to explain to the towns that we need this to maintain the current level of what we're providing here at Silver Lake. I'm very, very happy as a taxpayer to be paying for it.
I believe going to town meeting with this very new-looking situation and new budget is going to be a sales effort. I think it's going to have to be an educational one, factual, and get people comfortable. And if they've been following the dots to date, they know what we've done with the regional agreement, why we had to do it. We didn't just wake up one day and say, let's shake this all up and really, you know, make some changes. We had no choice. I completely agree. Before even thinking of selling, and I apologize for using the word selling, but presenting and gaining support for our next budget, I think we need to understand what's in front of us, what makes sense to include, not include. And that's where you go back to the apple and the orange comparison. Jason?
And I agree, Paula, 100%. And I don't want us to go too far down this road at this point because while we were presented with amazing information and data and explanation, the picture is still largely incomplete until we have the preliminary elementary budgets as well. Could you go back to Slide 6 for a moment, please?
Sure.
So Slide 6 is where the overall increase to Silver Lake is presented as a 37% increase and about $11 million. Yeah, thank you. So if I had the preliminary elementary budgets for the three towns and I saw the offset was very close to this, that's giving us the data that we're asking for. And obviously, we're going to need a few more pieces of the puzzle to explain how it all works and the intricacy of changing over, how the grant funding is coming, how circuit breakers are going to be readdressed. Is there going to be any one-year delay in any of the money we get back from the state? Because there are some grants that's the year after they pay for. Is there going to be a gap for a year? Or is it going to flow perfectly because we did what DESI asked? Like you said, can we go to DESI and ask for extraordinary relief? I don't think there's any money, but they might be able to allow us access to funds without having that wait period potentially. Maybe they can play ball. But I don't want us to go too much further until we have those other budgets.
I believe I understand that you're looking for additional information from me. And I will tell you, I've been here for about 15 minutes in the district. And I have completed the Halifax preliminary budget and a Silver Lake preliminary budget. And first thing tomorrow morning, I'm going to start Kingston. Haven't even started it, haven't even opened up the files to read yet. And so once I've completed Kingston next week and then flipped in the week after, then I will have a big picture of the buckets you were talking about. I almost just called you Graham, Gordon, sorry. So once I have the numbers, I can create a graphic for you that I think will be helpful. Also, I can back out the old Silver Lake from this budget and give you all of the old lines and all of the new lines. And so you can look at what the percent increase is on the old and then with the new lines, et cetera.
You know, this is a one-year pickup for us. After we get past this budget process, this budget year, then there's smooth, there's the apple to apple.
The glide path to FY '26.
Yes, yeah.
You're building that for us. We appreciate that.
It's just getting us from point A to point B this year. And I don't think, none of us want to ask for unnecessary work from anybody. And I think tonight was a wonderful overview and I don't want to downplay that at all. This was a wonderful overview for us, for the people sitting here and for the people watching. It's just getting us more clarity to the numbers, pre-amended agreement, post-amended agreement. And then we can start to look at.
And I should also say that not all of the changes are because of the amended agreement. Some of the changes are because of conversations with DESI. So again, I just want to clarify that just because I don't want it to be amended agreement was about pre-K and then about regulatory language changes. There were items here tonight that we discussed that were DESI requirements, but not part of the pre-K amendment process.
Yeah, they wouldn't have been looking at that though without the amended agreement.
Can I just clarify that you mean the assessment? The assessments is what you're, I'm sorry? Is what DESI has, they called us out on the assessments, the way the assessments were done. And that's the substantial, one of the substantial changes.
Right, the other district, yeah. So, I mean, to some extent, we're pulling off a Band-Aid. But once you know something isn't 100% the way a regulatory body believes it should be, there's no going back. So everything we've presented tonight has to be done. We can't go back to revolving accounts for special ed. We can't go back for the majority of special ed. We can't go back to some of the ways we were doing things. We need to rip off the Band-Aid, make it right, and move forward. Well, and that's a very sad part of this, to be honest with you, is what some of these increases, some of these expenses, we have to do. And there's no state or federal money backing it. We just have to absorb it in.
The IEP change that you're anticipating is, I'm guessing, not well-funded, if funded at all.
There's a grant, it's not very much, but it's mostly for the professional development or to purchase a platform that would help you be more efficient and effective with the new process. It doesn't take into consideration, it's not even so much the learning curve, it's very metric-driven. And there's a lot of information that you're going to have to get beforehand or extend the time of the meeting. So when you look at an annual meeting, maybe it was an hour, it's probably going to run an hour and 15 minutes, an hour and a half. So when you start to take that off a caseload of 20 students and you're a special education teacher, that's all the less time that you're going to be spending teaching students. And all the more time you're going to need to pay for. Not that that pay for work isn't important, it absolutely is. But we also have to remember that there's only six and a half hours during that day. He just have a lunch and a planning time. And so the ability to have a meeting, write the IEP, facilitate the process of sending out invitations and consents, something's going to give. And I don't want it to be the destruction of our students.
So I just want to thank the entire team for their work on this. And it was a whole team effort. But I want to especially point out that for Chris and Sarah, this is their first budget process and it could not have been more complicated this year. So I truly thank them for working with the rest of the team through this process and trying to help us articulate as clearly as possible the changes that were reflected in the budget tonight. We appreciate your feedback. We will work on additional ways to help explain the changes and to summarize the changes. And we will have them for you at our February meeting.
Is the February meeting the public budget hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
We might get some interesting questions.
That's, I was going to say, that's going to be busy.
So the next item on the district update is the notice of public comments. So the Department of Education has put out a notice. They're seeking comment on possible changes to the district grade school accountability system. The two main changes are increasing the weight of chronic absenteeism indication in the calculation. And the second is to include three years of data and the calculation of the 2024 accountability results because we now have three years of that revised assessment. The details related to each of the proposed changes are in your packet. It's a link to the document, the draft for public comments. And then also in your packet, you'll see a website where you can send your comments to. The email is elementarysecondaryEd.ACT@Mass.gov. That is listed in your packet as well. So I just wanted you to be aware of those potential changes to accountability and to give you the opportunity to respond to any concerns you may have about these potential changes.
Do you have a sense for, you know, how our administration or even your collective superintendency, how you folks might feel about it? The absenteeism is an interesting facet in that.
It's relatively new. In fact, the commissioner gave a talk yesterday. It's a relatively new change. Chronic absenteeism is currently in the formula. And the change is
Waiting on more?
Being done to try to help push students back to their attendance. Being done to try to help push students back to their attendance rates prior to COVID. Again, I think that's the intent of waiting it more. We have not had a lot of discussion about this as administrators. I have discussed with administrators individually, but not at the team as a whole. But we did have an update from the commissioner yesterday about these proposals. So it will be on our agenda moving forward. I think it's, you know, an age-old struggle. We want, we don't want kids to come to school when they're sick, but we do want kids to come to school when it's appropriate. And the school nurses typically will give you a list of things that you should stay home with and other things that you can come to school with. But again, we'd like to get people back to that, their attendance rates of the past. I don't, again, I don't know that this is going to change that. I think people need time to, one, I think people are trying to make sure that they're not sending their kids to school sick. And I do think, too, there are some students who just don't participate as much because of other issues related to COVID, where the isolation, breaking of routines, things like that. So sometimes developmentally or socially-emotionally, we have some issues there as well. But again, I think the emphasis here is for people to please send their children to school when they are healthy so that they can be participating because that's the, you know, that's the way that we ensure that they're getting what they need in terms of only social-emotional support from our staff, but also the academics as well. That's a good...
Thank you. Reports of special committees, SLVA.
Unfortunately, Joan couldn't be here again tonight, so you're stuck listening to me. I'm trying to be quick. I wanted to call back to something Connor mentioned when she was talking earlier about mid-year exams. It's like 8 o'clock. That was about 29 hours ago. Which is how students at high school are prepping for mid-year exams right now. One of the things that's been a silver lining in the terrifying dark cloud, which is COVID over the last few years, is we've been able to do a lot of project-based assessments for mid-year exams and for final exams in some classes. And I've had the opportunity to see some of those taking place in people's classes today. I was sitting in on the Project Leeway Capstone class where the students are presenting, they're working on a project to design a better, safer child car seat. And so they were pitching their proposals to myself, to Catherine Pat, one of our assistant principals, to Jackie Buset, who's one of our childcare teachers. And so they were pitching their design implementations before they actually start assembling their, you know, child products and stuff. And so that was a really exciting thing to be part of, and it's an ongoing effort throughout the year in that Capstone class, which is something that my colleague Craig Murray's been working on the last two years running this class. So stuff like that, the same place at the high school, which has been very cool. I also was heartened to see that despite some of the 9C cuts that they're talking about at the state level, it doesn't look like it's going to affect our education budgets, although I guess I'll defer to the expertise of Jason's espionage network whether or not those details are totally correct. I also really appreciate the consideration you're all giving to the extra funding for staff to support our special education students and our English-language students. I'm lucky enough this year to have an intro physics class with nine English-language learners in it. And I can tell you that it is very nice to see the looks on their faces where a lot of these students are getting back into school for the first time after multi-year gaps in their education. And so, you know, whether or not it is politically advantageous to give these children a full education, it certainly is heartwarming to see it happen. And so I thank you for your consideration on that, looking to support those kids in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrative review, meeting on February 8?
Yes.
CTE?
No meetings over.
Okay. Chairman's report, Chairman's Report Correspondence. I think I shared with all of you the email from DESI accepting our amended regional agreement. It will be executed and effective, executed by take effect July 1. We will take the backup from DESI and the newly executed regional agreement, share the regional agreement with everybody so you have an executed copy, take everything and put it in the centralized document facility that we put together a number of years ago so that 15, 20 years from now, when somebody asks a question and did DESI ever look at this, we've got the backup tucked away safely and stored away. Legislative agents' report.
Well, before that, I just want to say, well done coordinating, getting the three towns together. I know that you helped lead a lot of the conversations with the chairs from the other three school committees in our district and getting this across the plate on time. You had to make some extra phone calls and send some extra emails. So I just want to congratulate you and thank you for all the work you've put in to make sure that occurred.
Thank you, and the district is very welcome.
So, yeah, I started to hear a chatter about 9C cuts right before the December revenue numbers came through. We have not missed, we have not hit revenues for a single month this fiscal year at the state level. The projected shortfall was going to be about $1 billion in the $42 billion budget for FY23. So Governor Healy did announce some 9C cuts. Education was not directly hit. It was $375 million in cuts of monies that were promised that now won't be delivered and about $641 million in one-time funds that were used to stopgap the deficit. Unfortunately for some districts that approach earmarks in the budget, a lot of nonprofits and a lot of schools get little earmarks here and there from their state legislatures, legislators, aren't going to be seeing those dollars now. Which we benefited from here in district before at our local levels and at the regional level. So they also came in consensus revenues for FY24, 25, excuse me, getting my fiscal years right. And they're actually projecting less revenue next year than they had already cut the billion from this year. So we're looking at about a $40 billion budget next year. And so it's not going to be a year where we see a $750,000 increase in state aid. So we need to be very cautious and careful with any dollars we spend because they are definitely going to come out of the local resources. Going down to DC to meet with our congressional delegation, I had meetings with the majority of our reps and both of our senators on the 30th of January. And basically, I'm just asking them to hold fast on support for our federal earmarks. The Every Student Succeeds Act is one of the major funding sources. That's where all the title funding comes out of. Collectively, as a district, we get about $400,000 in Title I funds. If you put all four of our districts together, you get about $1.1 million in IDEA, which is basically the federal version of Circuit Breaker for special ed. And that's already chronically underfunded. It's supposed to be 40%. Last year, it was about 14% with extraordinary costs. If it was ever fully funded, we could see about $4 million roll into the four districts. There is a contingent still. This was the same old story last year of House members who want to roll back all funding at the federal level to 2019 levels because they legitimately believe that all federal funding since COVID has been artificial and needs to be removed, and we need to press reset. And that would absolutely devastate us. Just Silver Lake and federal monies, we get about $712,000 a year, which is about 2.5% of our overall budget. Any erosion in that with the state funding situation I'm seeing right now, coupled with all these changes, it's going to be a very interesting budget season. Sometimes I agree with you, sometimes I disagree. For a non-recessionary situation, it's the worst I've seen since 2014.
Well, thank you. That certainly adds perspective. Negotiations, no?
No, we have a big one.
Pat?
I got a double report. We had a November meeting, or sorry, we didn't have a November meeting. We did have a December meeting that coincided with our December meeting. So I went to PAC instead, and then we just had a January meeting last week. So I will try to do this quickly. The December meeting was all of the big reports. We had our auditor's report, which was accepted. There was a cumulative surplus in the budget for PAC of $1.9 million. Silver Lake is not listed among the member districts. It's done town by town. But Halifax is getting $9,000 back roughly, Kingston almost $15,000, and Plington almost $3,000. There was a budget amendment, just updating the amounts as of May. The executive director's report and the FY23 annual report were also delivered. So it was a very info-heavy meeting. And then January was even more, that comes back to this committee. So our collaborative agreement, which is done every 10 years, that's been rewritten. There are some language updates, and we had our first read-through. And Dr. Dintna Thomas, the executive director of the PAC, did offer that if she would, if this committee would like, she can come to a future committee meeting and answer our questions and present more on that, if we would like that. And then we would need to vote to accept on behalf of Silver Lake as a committee. And then I think you can sign off, Paula, as the chair. That was pretty much it. And then just some brief budget updates. But the big one was the 10-year agreement at the last meeting. I think that's all I have.
Thank you for being busy. The collaborative agreement.
I think it's kind of like our regional agreement where it's, there were not any major changes to the governing document, but they do update it every 10 years and just clean up the language, update like that.
So do you know, would they present us with a red line?
I believe so. We haven't gotten that yet. This was just the first read-through.
Okay.
And then we'll be getting a document. I don't know if we all get it or if it comes to me and then I share it with you and Karen. And then I think we vote as a collaborative, and then it goes to the individual committees, but I might be getting the order wrong on that.
Very good. Policy.
So I was just waiting on approval from a couple chairs of the couple committees in the Union 31 and the Lake to send some information from the police department and some state mandated body cameras and what that would mean for the use of those body cameras in our schools by RSRROs. So I have forwarded all of that information to MASC, to Jim Hardy, who handles policy for them and who is unfortunately retiring very soon because he's been really good for the South Shore, helped us with the superintendent search if you were with us back then. So we will be looking to fill Jim's beats at MASC, but he is digging into that right now and looking for policy or at least directions to give out to school districts of how to address body cameras in our school buildings.
So would that be like as it relates to FERPA?
It would be multifaceted. This is not going to be easy, right? Because we're dealing with the state law that requires them to do it and all the regulations and policies we have about where cam cannot be recorded. We're not the only district doing it. Luckily, there's a lot of good minds coming together to try and work out the middle ground that makes sense.
Thank you. Safer?
No, nobody.
Treasuries report.
Okay, so there were a total of 17 warrants totaling $1,189,715.82. Students, I can't read my phone, activities warrant totaling $10,785.96, a payroll warrant of $916,808.75, for a grand total of $2,117,310.53.
Did I screw any of that up?
Sounds good.
Union 31, next meeting is February 15.
Is that in person?
I believe it's in person.
I think it's in person.
And I think, well, we'd be looking at the shared cost drafts at that meeting as well.
That's the intent?
Is in person, are you traveling, I think?
No, I just wanted to... We have to talk about April Silver Lake meeting, which might be a budget vote. Because I will not be available on the date that we have.
Yeah, we may end up squeezing another one in March.
No, I'm available on the 15th. I was just seeing how I should dress. Yeah, I know what I'm talking about.
Single signature warrants.
I just didn't get the joke. I'm sorry, I'm side talking. Sorry, did you ask me a question? Did you do it?
No, we're just moving.
Single signature warrants.
There was one warrant for arbiter pay that, I apologize. It wasn't a single, I'm confused by the terminology because it was sent to you electronically and you all signed it.
Okay.
So it wasn't a single signature.
The three designees probably signed it.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's only a portion of the committee that signs the single signature.
Okay.
For Kingston, it's like one person, but...
It's in the pile specifically. Do I need to read the amounts of that into the minutes of voting?
The single signature?
Yes.
Do you have them? Do you have it? It would be in the pile. I have to go now.
I think Christine used to just say they were sent to electronically. She thinks Christine used to just say they were sent to electronically and then signed.
Okay, and no doubt about it.
She might have given a total. She might have given a total.
But is it necessary?
Is that on this one? I don't know. Is it on my clipboard?
I know.
It sounds more like a resignation.
So there was a warrant for arbiter pay that couldn't wait until 2020 that was sent electronically, and I don't know the amount at this time.
Okay, no worries. All right, future meetings, dates to remember. Martin Luther King next Monday. February 8 is the next school committee meeting, which will be our budget and hearing. I'm sorry?
Here.
And February 15, again, the joint school committee meeting.
Probably also here.
Motion to adjourn.
Soon.
Second? All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.